Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hallibrack?
Here.
Mr. Kosker?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Color Guard presentation by the Colonial Forge Army JRTC?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank the Colonial Forge High School's Army JRTC for being with us this evening to present the colors. Their instructors are Colonel Mark Strong and Sergeant Major Lee Worthing. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Dr. Chase?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would move to approve the agenda, but with a slight amendment. I would like to change the wording of item 13.01, convening the closed session, to discuss or consider the scheduling of an employee discipline appeal hearing to the scheduling and format of an employee's requested dismissal hearing.
Okay, do we have a second?
Ms. Healy, I will second, but I have a further amendment. I would like to ask that the action, item 10.02, the approval of the school board's budget priorities be moved to information for this evening so that we may conclude those in December with further discussion. Some of that is my fault. I was unable to meet with one of the members this weekend to help work on them. So I will take that as a hit.
Okay. Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay.
Second, second.
I think you're the third.
Well, I'm sorry, second.
All right, so we have a motion for a amended agenda with two changes. The change Dr. Chase mentioned with respect to the wording in the closed session motion and moving the approval of the budget priorities for FY '21 from action to information. And we'll add that at the last information item, Ms. Hall. All right, so all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards. We'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph Lewis for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kizner. Would Chef Sussman please join me? I'd like to congratulate the following students who have placed in the culinary arts competitions at the State Fair of Virginia. Culinary Two students, Jayla Lucas, third place, pound cake; Daniel Fitzsimmons, second place, biscuits; Xavier Worthing, second place, kick it up oatmeal cookies; and Caitlin Pylent, first place, biscuits. I think we're all going to get a diabetic coma.
Did you bring samples?
Culinary One students, I did not bring samples, I'm sorry.
But did you bring students?
Yes, we did. Culinary One students, Rachel Cooper, third place, smores layer cake; Thomas Onks, third place, chocolate chip cookies; Elizabeth Armstrong, second place, chocolate muffins; Mackenzie Bosworth, second place, sugar cookies; Cynthia Sevettelli, a Colonial Forge student, second place, sugar cookies; Christian Hale, second place, red velvet cupcakes; Allison Smith, a Colonial Forge student, first place, savory breads; and Jasmine Constassa, first place, candy.
Congratulations. Next time, bring us pictures if you don't bring the real thing. And we can really get hungry. Next, we'd like to recognize Dr. Dan Hornick, principal of North Stafford High School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. Dr. Kizner, at this time, would Gabriel Cummings please come forward? Tonight, I'm pleased to bring to you, to your attention, an incredible North Nation senior. Gabriel Cummings has been a leader, innovator, and strong student for the past three-plus years. Recently, he came to my office and informed me that he wanted, had a golden opportunity to present to me for completing his Eagle Scout requirements and for North Stafford to reap some amazing benefits. So his idea was to organize numerous volunteers and get into the woods and the paths around North Nation. His goals were to clean out underbrush, improve the walking surface, and increase visibility. I was somewhat skeptical because his proposal was to get it done in less than a week. However, as always, Gabriel proved us wrong. He was able to coordinate with numerous stakeholders, including important folks who could provide him information about egress and property lines. And then ultimately, on Saturday, September the 21st, Gabriel and more than 40 of his friends, teammates, fellow churchgoers, and anybody else he could wrangle completed the work. The results are amazing, and we're incredibly proud of you, Gabriel, for your efforts in taking a leadership role in addressing a community issue. I'd also like to note that Gabriel is an incredibly well-rounded student who participates on the North Stafford swim and lacrosse teams. Please join me in congratulating and recognizing Mr. Gabriel Cummings. For our next group, please come forward as I call your name. You're in alphabetical order. Juan Escona, Denzel Barrera, Tanisha Davis, Thomas Hinckler, Cole Marushi, Marvin Moore Garcia, Cameron Stewart, Jacob Zant, and of course, Mr. Leap. At the recent VHSL championships in October, North Stafford's flagship news program, NSNOW, received the highest possible VHSL rating, which is trophy class. Only two schools in the entire state received this recognition, and this is the equivalent to winning a state championship in broadcasting. As many in this chamber and throughout this division know, these young people, under the direction of this amazing instructor, continue to wow us with their professionalism and their abilities and what they're learning and what they can put into practice is incredibly impressive. And it's important to note that a lot of these young folks work with the Communication Office to bring forward the good news that impacts all of Stafford County public schools. So I would like for you to join me in recognizing these amazing students and Mr. Leap on their state championship trophy class. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick. We'd next like to recognize Ms. Carrie Neely, chief elementary officer, for presentation of awards. Oh, is, let's see.
I'm not Carrie Neely, she had a...
Oh, you know what? I got the wrong information, but we are always welcome, Ms. Dr. Nichols.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Kizner. The Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council for Interstate Compact of the Educational Opportunity for Military Children recently awarded 123 Virginia schools with the Purple Star designation. The Purple Star designation recognizes military-friendly schools and demonstrates their commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected families. To qualify for the Purple Star designation, schools must have a trained staff member assigned as a primary point of contact to work with the military families and students. The point of contact also serves as liaison between the schools and local military communities. They also provide resources and programming on issues impacting military families, such as the transitions and the academic planning that needs to take place. Stafford County Public Schools is honored to recognize the 2019 Purple Star recipients. And if you would hold your applause until I've finished reading their school names, and then please come forward. Hampton Oaks Elementary, Rock Hill Elementary, Wide Water Elementary, and Winding Creek Elementary Schools. Please join me in congratulating all these folks as they come forward. We also have our liaison, Penny Raleigh, from the Marine Corps Base Quantico with us.
Thank you all.
And thank you, Dr. Nichols. All right, next on my list is Mr. Greg Daniel, principal of Colonial Forge High School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kizner. Would Deb Hanson and Erin Tullumac please come forward? I am pleased to announce that Colonial Forge High School's 2019-2020 Life Changer of the Year nominees are Deb Hanson and Erin Tullumac. The Life Changer of the Year program recognizes and rewards K-12 employees who make a positive difference in the lives of students. An anonymous person nominated our drama teacher, Ms. Hanson. As an educator, Ms. Hanson is very understanding of her students' personal lives and needs, and she makes a tremendous effort to make everything as convenient as possible. She encourages her students to always do better, and she makes sure to recognize their hard work and improvements. She views mistakes as an opportunity for learning and correction rather than failure. Mrs. Hanson makes sure the drama department is an open and welcoming place for everyone. Her accomplishments include, but are not limited to, receiving the distinction of Teacher of the Year for Colonial Forge. Her department has also received many awards at the county and state levels due to her skilled direction and leadership. Erin Tullumac received nominations from two anonymous students who state, "Mr. Tullumac is an interesting man who seems intimidating and formidable, but who is actually very helpful, generous, and intelligent. He cares about his students and gives them every opportunity to better themselves. Mr. Tullumac is strict, but he makes his class fun, and his students appreciate the challenges he presents. He also cares deeply about what his students are going through in their personal lives." I quote from a nomination, "After losing a classmate, he came down and sat with us making bracelets and made sure we were all doing okay. During this difficult time, he did whatever needed to make us feel better and understood what we were going through, so he changed things around for us. He even let us eat lunch in his room one day and told jokes that made us feel better. Mr. Tullumac demonstrates his compassion for his students in other ways, such as making himself available to talk about essays. He cares about the beliefs of all students so that no one gets embarrassed during class discussions. He made me love going to class because it was enjoyable, and he made the learning atmosphere laid back and fun," said another one of his nominators. Deb Hanson and Erin Tullumac are intelligent and incredibly talented teachers who work hard and care about students. At Colonial Forge, on behalf of Colonial Forge, we're extremely proud of each of them for their nominations. Please join me in congratulating Deb Hanson and Erin Tullumac.
All right, last but certainly not least, we'd like to recognize Ms. Sharie Johnson, Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kizner. I am here this evening to thank the community partners that helped make the SCPS operation Warm More Than a Coat Campaign a success. Community Engagement Manager Sharice Taylor led the event, which took place on November 6th at Company 12 Fire and Rescue. Volunteers sorted and delivered more than 1,400 new coats, ensuring that every Stafford County Public School student in need is warm and prepared to succeed. Representatives, please come forward when you hear your name, business, or organization called. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Breg International Incorporated, Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department, The Rotary Club of Stafford, Apple Federal Credit Union, NSWC Federal Credit Union, Sorenson Gross Construction Services, Ebenezer United Methodist Church, Outback Steakhouse, Stafford County Parks Recreation and Community Facilities, Capella University, Sprint, Design Storage and Handling Incorporated, Rappahannock Orthodontics, Target, B101.5 FM, Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce, North Stafford Rotary, Mount Arid Baptist Church. Collaboration with our stakeholders is key, and the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement especially wishes to thank Stafford County Fire and Rescue, under the leadership of Fire Chief Joseph Cardello, and Ebenezer United Methodist Church, under the leadership of Pastor Rob Lowe. Operation Warm would not be successful without all of our community partners. Together, we raised more than $20,000 with the help of 65 individuals and community partners, some of whom are represented here today and many others who could not attend. Thank you to the SCPS counselors and staff who assisted with the coordination required to make this event a success. Thank you to Stafford County Government, Parks, and Recreation for providing the initial location for the event before it was rescheduled. Thank you to B101.5 FM and the Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce for publicizing the event on your platforms. Again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to many more partnerships in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I've received a request that we take the consent agenda next. If there's no objection, I think Dr. Kizner has an announcement and someone to introduce that may have other things on the agenda tonight. Is any objection to doing the consent agenda next? All right, well, do we have a motion?
Move to move the consent agenda ahead of the staff report.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 901, or two consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Ms. Gardner, please come down. Don't be shy. It is great pleasure to introduce Ms. Caitlin Gardner, who you just appointed as the next Assistant Principal or the new Assistant Principal for Stafford Middle School. Ms. Gardner has been a teacher with Stafford County Public Schools since August 2012. She currently teaches world geography at Stafford Middle School. In addition to Ms. Gardner's daily teaching responsibilities, she has been a mentor teacher to many since 2013 and has also been a social studies lead since 2013. She's responsible for all 504 plans for the eighth grade, maintaining regular communication with students, parents, and teachers to ensure all 504 plan accommodations are met. She earned her master's in ed degree from ed leadership from University of Mary Washington and holds a bachelor's of science degree in social studies, secondary ed from Rad University. I must also tell you, I interviewed her last week, and if you're ever feeling like not positive and you want to be positive, you hang out with her, okay? And what I love what she said was that Stafford and Stafford Middle School is where I want to be because I know I can make a difference, and this is what I wake up every morning. Because she travels to get here, and I asked her, "Why do you come this far?" And she says, "Because I love being at Stafford Middle School." So we love that you've accepted the position, and welcome aboard.
All right. You're welcome to stay or leave.
Can we clone her?
That brings us to staff reports. Dr. Kizner?
Okay, so as requested by the school board, just so you, we're giving you an update. This work is far from done. We're giving you an update of the work of the Transportation Administration joint effort to improve the student performance, behavior on the school buses. I'll send it over. I think Tom was designated to be the spokesperson.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner, Madam Chair, school board members. Tonight, I was appointed to present the progress report of our committee. We've met twice thus far, meeting on October 22nd, November 7th. We're planning again to meet before the Thanksgiving holiday on the 26th. I'd like to... I wanted to first go over our makeup of our committee. We have six bus drivers with experience of five years, all the way up to 30-plus years on our committee. We have the three principals. One from each level is on our committee. We have the three academic chiefs for the elementary, middle, and high. And then we also have the executive director of transportation, also the supervisor of special programs on our committee, along with Associate Superintendent Pam Cale, and also Executive Director of Student Services, Mr. Hummer. And this evening, to show our support for our committee work so far, our bus drivers and our committee are wearing yellow. My wife said I had a yellow tie, so I'm good. So would you guys please stand on the committee to recognize your hard work thus far? We appreciate their time. We've been meeting in the middle of the day, and we've been meeting for about two and a half hours each day, and we've been able to accomplish a lot of work, but yet we've gone from one spectrum to the other. And we still have a lot of work to do ahead of us, but we feel we're making great progress. Our goal, you know, is really to implement consistent student expectations for all the buses. And we also want to make sure that we have a positive school climate and culture on our buses, just like we want that climate to be positive in our school. We want the same thing on our buses because we know that the bus drivers are the first ones to interact with our students, so they're going to set the day for all of us. And then, of course, we want to make sure that we communicate these expectations out to all of our students, PK to 12. A lot of the work started was initially talking about what do we see as the problem? So we all started talking about rules, and we went through a whole list of things from, "Thou shall not..." this, 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 you know, really long. So then we started talking about, "How can we turn this into positive expectations?" Because I think what we found is that through positive expectation, we get a lot more out of kids than telling them, "No, thou shall not do this, this, and this." So we worked several days, and like I said, we came out, and the drivers and the committee are very creative, and they came up with bus. Bus expectations. As you can see, be responsible, use respect, and stay safe. And simply, this was something that they felt, and the committee felt, that we can say, "Hey, let's not forget our bus, our bus expectations." But then we spent the last minute going over, "What actually does it mean to be responsible?" So we started listing again all kinds of things. And we came up with three things that are encompassing many, but be on time to the bus stop. Be on time after school. Make sure you're on the bus so we don't have to wait. Save your snacks to later. Instead of saying, "No food or drink," let's try and save those for later. We know some students may need those for different situations. And also, keep the bus clean. We want an orderly, clean bus, and we want to be responsible to our buses and our drivers. Use respect. We want our students to be respectful to the drivers, the attendants, and to the other students on the bus. Kind words. Talking about language. Let's remember, please and thank you. And one of the things we talked about in some of the trainings we'll get into, when we talked about welcoming students onboard, you know? "Good morning. Have a great day. Have a great afternoon. We'll see you tomorrow morning." Talking about the, using kind words. And also, if we model that, we want to get that back on the buses. We also talked about one that was sort of a little controversial, we spent some time, but if we're going to use headphones, if we're using any type of electronic devices. That way, we won't have issues where people are playing music really loud. They can keep themselves and do what they're doing and stay in their personal space. But then, stay safe. We want to make sure that our students are in their assigned seats. We have students that are assigned on their buses. We assign them the seats. They need to stay in those seats. Use your inside voice. That reflects back to my years, my kids are growing up to Barney, use your inside voice. But that's what we want, to keep them low and soft, not screaming and shouting. Because again, these folks have a huge responsibility. They need to face forward, driving down the road, and they need to be able to hear and see what's going on. And then, hands and feet, feet, oh my goodness, hands and feet to yourself. Stay in your personal space. And we know sometimes, I heard today, sometimes on those buses, there might be three to the seat. You're going to be close, but if we're not grabbing or touching or, you know, keeping our feet and hands to ourselves, we'll have a safe ride home. So this was something, and again, these things can encompass. And our idea is to create, we looked at, actually looked at some surrounding divisions. They have like a one-page pamphlet or sheet talking about bus expectations. So we want to take each one of these bullets and expand on it. What does it really mean to be on time? What does it mean to stay in your assigned seat? Use your inside voice, or use your electronic devices with headphones? And expand on that a little more detail. But again, this is our quick bus expectations. But one of the things that came up in our committee is that, you know, we're trying to brand this. We want it to be positive, and they came up with, "Ride with pride." "I ride with pride," or "I drive with pride." "We ride with pride." But they're really neat on having a brand of, "What is this all about?" When you experience a bus transportation trip in Stafford County Public Schools, we know that we're going to ride with pride. So thus, we have our bus expectations. And that was where we went back to setting the expectations with all students, parents, and our administrators, and teachers, et cetera. The other thing we discussed was having a process to have referrals, behavioral referrals, that can be turned in a little more time-efficient. Because right now, if we stop at a school and they stopped to write up a referral, and they have to get off the bus, turn it in, or they have to stop somewhere, and it takes a day maybe to get back, or if they get early back to the school, they can get it in at the end of the day. So we're developing an electronic referral system, which is actually alive through Google Docs that our bus drivers can have access to because all of our drivers have Google accounts. So they will be able to access this, whether it's from their personal device or a computer that's made available within a school, their own computer, or at the worksite transportation. But with this electronic referral system, they can send a referral. The administration will receive it in a more timely manner. They'll be able to address the issue concerned, and then with the actions taken, they can send it back. And it'll be a lot quicker, again, than waiting to the end of the day to walk out to the ramp, to get to the driver, to hand them the paper copy. This is just a little more efficiency. In our day and age today, we thought this would be a lot more effective use of our time, and also to make sure that we get communications back into written we get communications back into written format. The other nice thing about this, it'll allow us to track the behaviors or track the incidents or track what's going on on a certain bus. That way, we can look at our data, I can, we can analyze it and look at what else needs to be done, if any other type of measures.
Let me, this is really important. You've heard me since I got here talk about data, data dashboard, and so on. Right now, we have, we could say many kids, a lot of issues. We have no idea. We have no idea. It all goes into one big disciplined data. It could be the same, if you were sent out to the principal's office or you were sent off a bus, we don't separate that. So, we're going to create a benchmark and then we'll be able to measure over time if we're seeing improvement. So, this is a, that behavioral infraction, track and analyze is a very important part of this process.
And again, the whole, the whole issue with this and creating the electronic referral system is to have better communications and response to referrals. What we're looking at right now in a rollout schedule is that we've already been talking to administrators during our October, and then this week, we have some more administrator meetings. We've been talking to our APs and our principals about communications, timely communications, making sure we have people assigned to the bus ramp who there's consistent faces versus, in a high school, you might have four, or in middle school, three people, or middle school, or elementary school, two. So, trying to have somebody consistent that they can get to know and talk with and address these on a daily basis. So, we've already started that. We'll continue, again, as I said, this week and into next week. Training with drivers, we're looking to develop that training and offer this in December, working with Barry on how we can roll this out. Also, looking at schools and holding meetings, the first week of January is when we want to really kick it off. You know, with this year, we're starting new, a new semester, a new classes for some kids. So, we're going to start with assemblies where we can, whether grade level, whether it's school-wide, class level, but we can talk about the expectation and make sure we're clear. Everybody knows what is expected when we talk about bus expectations. But then the same thing is working with communications to develop the rollout for letting our parents know, hey, these are our expectations on our buses. We want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Because what we found in our committee work when we started was there were some different, there wasn't consistency across every bus or in a school. So, we wanted to make sure everybody was consistent. These are the expectations, this is what we expect of you when you ride a bus in Stafford County Public Schools. And then again, we will follow up, and that will be ongoing, of course, all of this. And then the subcommittee, again, is going to be meeting throughout the year as we continue our work, as we look at other aspects to improve the behaviors and the expectations for our buses. So, with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Chair, I have a question.
All right, okay, we'll start with Ms. Young and give everybody a chance to ask questions or make comments.
Yeah, real quick, this is great. I love it. One of the things I noticed on the bus expectation, and I think it was meant to just stay positive, but I didn't see anywhere about foul language. Kind words slash foul language because it's nowhere. So, they could do all of this stuff and be responsible, have their electronic headphones on, but still sing out foul language.
Understood. With this, when we turned it into a positive expectation, we said, "Use kind words."
Okay.
So, in our description, when this expands, it will basically address that we are not going to tolerate foul language, inappropriate language, that we do expect all students to use kind words.
Right.
Because again, this is going PK all the way to 12. So, we tried to make it friendly.
Correct.
For all students and we, and they all felt that using kind words described what they wanted.
Sure.
It would be expanded at each level.
Sure. And then so, do these rules kind of connect with the ones that you started looking at and say, "Oh, there's just too many?" So, if they do any of these anyway, would they have some discipline actions that they, that you will connect these with? Like if they do, don't do this, then you have discipline?
Yeah, we felt that the bus expectations were broad.
Right.
That we could follow. And we still have the code of conduct currently that we.
That will connect to this.
Call inappropriate behaviors.
Yeah. And then the last thing, I'm sorry, when you mentioned about being able to use electronic, the personal bus drivers using electronic, that's PHI. So, are we sure that that's something that, private health, the information itself, like the name of the person? I don't know if you want to put that on somebody else's device. So, it needs to be a school device, not a personal device from a bus driver.
When we talked about this, they said they checked their school emails on their devices.
Got it.
And they felt that through Google, since we use Google as a platform.
Okay.
That that was an easy way for them, that the drivers on the committee felt that it was an easy way. But we will still have computers available in our schools and also transportation.
So, the name of those individuals will be protected away from that personal device, right?
Right, we will, yeah. We're working with that to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Who wants to go next? Ms. Egan?
Sure. I just have two questions. What has changed with those administrators who didn't address these issues before? What are you doing to compel them to address it? Is there going to be some kind of training for the administrators? Are there going to be consequences if they? I mean, we don't want it to be status quo. We don't want the bus drivers come back next year to say, "I've submitted 10 referrals and I got no response from administrators." So, what are we doing to compel them to address it?
Well, again, I think what we found, and I can't say for sure that that's actually what happened because in talking to it, it seems like when you talk with administrators, they're receiving referrals and they'll deal with them. But I think what we had is we had a lack of communication going back in some instances, not all. But here's what the consequences are, here's the actions that as an administrator I took, I didn't get it back out to the bus ramp to give to the driver or the transportation. That's why we felt going with electronic platform would allow us to have almost a live response and speed up that communications process.
Fair enough. And then the second question that I had, are you guys looking at making any changes to the structure of consequences?
This committee right now has not looked at that. Now, again, we are meeting again, they've talked a little bit, but I think right now with what we have, because again, that code of conduct is something you guys approve, is that right now, it is arranged from a minimum to a maximum that our principals, you know, who are trained in dealing with behavioral management and things of that nature, will be able to look at each individual child and not just a widget that we're checking a box, but what's going on? Because we had a lot of conversation, we don't know always the true story.
Right.
And it might make a difference. And when we talked with the drivers in our committee conversations was that, you know, if I would have known that, I would look at it a little differently. So, trying to improve that communication is also in sharing.
Well, and the reason that I ask that question, and you guys have heard me say this before, is that a lot of times, that code of conduct listed in the consequences here, we give, you know, we've given you, you know, a dozen or so tools to use and it always seemed to me that it was always, they'd reach in and grab the top of the, you know, like the machete in a toolbox of, you know, from a screwdriver to a machete, they were grabbing the machete. So, my concern is that, you know, I just want us to be cognizant that there are plenty of tools in that toolbox. I don't want to see kids get kicked off the bus because, you know.
Yeah, so Ms. Hollaback, I'm real glad you said that because you have said numerous times, sitting where you're sitting right now, to look at the toolbox. And we're looking at the toolbox and every part of that toolbox does have a conversation with the student, so it's not being ignored. But we have to look at every student individually and I don't want to give stories up here, but you know your stories. There's one thing that we all know, that's why we chose to be educators and not work for a water bottle company. And a water bottle company, you've got to have 10 ounces in this and you have to close the cap the same way. That's the standardization.
Right.
With children, they come with stories. And if you are a child that we all read in the newspaper over the weekend who went through a horrendous thing in their family and you're on the school bus and you start acting out a little bit, that principal knows that child, knows that situation. It may handle it completely different than another child that didn't experience what that child did over the weekend. And so, that's, that's why I think we all signed up to be educators.
Sure, sure. No, I agree with that completely. That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking, are we going to have this conversation going forward now that we're talking about consequences and what, you know, what things might change? So, the only thing that I would ask is when you're having those conversations, to keep the bus drivers in that discussion so that they're aware of what's going on too. That's all.
Okay, next, Ms. Hazen?
Sure. I'm glad that we're doing this work and I'm really glad that the bus drivers are part of this conversation. I don't know if part of what you're looking for is the branding. I know the Stafford Education Foundation went out, I see Dr. Hornig back there, sitting there thinking, hmm, which of my students could submit something for a logo? But I mean, it's been really fun to like get our students involved in branding stuff. Maybe that would be a neat thing to throw out to our, well, I saw a whole bunch of journalism, people up there, to maybe have them be involved in maybe making it a branding thing with a bus. Believe me, I can't draw, so you do not want me on that thought process.
I will let you know, he came with one at the last meeting, already an idea from a graphics art classroom.
Okay, I didn't talk to him, I didn't know that. I'm not giving him a, but anyway, I think that's a great way.
He just gave us a thumbs up, actually, back there.
That's right. I think though, also, as we go forward, I do think one of the really important pieces of this is the students, but it's also the parents. And I think if, and I know for a kindergarten, or maybe this isn't, but if you're going to do like a contract, and I mean that in a loose sense, that the parent also has to understand the consequences on a bus. I may be not in the majority here, but I do believe that the code of conduct needs to have a special section for bus behavior. Because I believe when a student is, I've watched, you know, when a, when you're in the cafeteria and a kid's hit with the water bottle, that's unfortunate. But when one of my bus drivers is hit with a water bottle driving down the street at 50, you know, 45 miles an hour, that's a different issue to me. That's the safety of not just that bus driver, that is of three classrooms potentially of students. So, I am of the opinion that that needs to be a separate section of the, and I mentioned this at the listening tour, so this isn't new. I just believe there are some things that are different on a bus that we need to do.
I'll let you know, at the, our last meeting, we are already talking and that's where we're going to continue to meet, that the committee, and again, we'll present that, but we would like to work with Lisa Boatwright in crafting as she looks at redesigning code of conduct to have something for buses.
I know we have on there a list for like our cell phone policy, we have a contract. Maybe we should have one for the bus as well as an additional insert. I mean, Ms. Boatwright, you may be redesigning it, but you know, our bus safety, I mean, believe me, I get riled up enough about our Stafford drivers who pass you guys on the buses that I get completely over the, but if we are very clear that our expectations and that there are consequences, because I do believe that, I still believe at the end of the day that riding a bus is a privilege and not a right and that there is behavior that has to be monitored. And I, I know we have to reach out to students, but when I, these ladies know, they have come to me and talked about the people who have been hit in the head, we cannot continue to have that happen on a bus.
Ms. Gator?
Thank you for all your work.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, Chairwoman Healy and I met with the bus drivers a month and a half ago or whatever. But I just wanted to say how impressed I've been with, you know, it's easy to complain about problems and say what you're upset about. What's much more valuable is coming and helping come up with the solutions. And at that meeting, there were bus drivers there who were right away giving us creative ideas about what we could do. And I'm really happy to see that that process is continuing because we can't do it without you and it's really helpful to be, everybody working together and trying to be positive and not just complain, but actually come up with solutions. So, that's all I have.
Ms. McOscar?
Sure. Good job. Everyone's done great work. Just get the complaints, do need to be filed somewhere so that we do have 15, 20 complaints from one bus, you know, we can see a trend or protects the students and it protects the driver. So, that's the, that's probably the big thing. And the rest of it, you all can, you all take care of the rest of that stuff. Thanks.
Okay, and you know, my comments have to touch on a lot of what's been said. I think it's really good to have the expectations out there, but you also mentioned behavior infractions. And I think if they could be defined, and I agree with the comments about the code of conduct, but, but just generally, I think it's important that it's very clear to the students as well as their parents, you know, what is unacceptable. And I get the positive and I think that's really good, but ultimately, you know, people need to know that the parents as well as the students, you know, what the consequences will be, you know, if there are issues. Maybe there'll be none, but if there are, you know, to protect, you know, all the students, other students as well as the driver, I think, I think that would be helpful. And also, you know, I have a question and maybe this is something that, you know, could be looked into. The electronic referral system, when the referrals are going to the principal, whether there's a way to loop the parents in on that? Because I'm not sure of, you know, how this all works. You know, I've heard there, it works differently depending on, you know, what site you're at. And I'm assuming that part of this whole process is to have uniformity so that it doesn't matter what bus you're on or what school you attend, that, you know, there will be the same expectations and the same consequences. But I think the more parents are involved and informed, they perhaps, you know, the issues may work themselves out more quickly. Because if, if we have, you know, constant referrals and maybe it doesn't get to a point to, you know, involve the parents until later on, then they really don't have that opportunity. So, I, I don't know, you know, how it all works. I will be riding a bus next month, I promised, in December. I'm sure it'll be perfect, perfect there, right? Right? Already picked my bus out, it's right across the street from my house. It starts at North Stafford, so, you know, I'll be there. I'll come for breakfast when we're done, if Dr. Kizner gives me, you know, a pass to go to the school. But anyway, I just, I just think that's something to think about because this is really going to be a partnership that involves the parents and the families as well as between the bus drivers and the students.
And our whole thing too is the positive expectations, we're taking that bus as a classroom, just as we would great classroom management, we have to do great bus management. So, it is involving everybody, a partnership to make it happen. But I do want to thank the committee because I'm just the lucky one to stand up here and talk, but they've been the ones coming to the meetings and giving out the ideas and sharing because I am not a bus driver, nor will I confess to be one. But, you know, their experiences, wow.
Well, this is very impressive work in a short amount of time.
And this bus doesn't have any rights.
It's amazing. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not finished. You know, what's been done here, and Dr. Kizner sent us an article today about Spotsylvania bus drivers and starting to look at their pay scales and retention and recruitment. I have a feeling that their next step is going to go after our bus. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Nichols and the committee, and we'll look forward to your next report.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to citizen comments. We have three citizens who signed up. The, oh, Dr. Chase, you can read their little.
Sure, our little blurb. Individuals wishing to comment may do so at this time. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policies 1113 Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to our three speakers who've signed up. Leigh Anne Poland from Stafford Rotary is first, Sherri Neal is second, and Dana Brown is third.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, Madam Chairman, Dr. Kizner, and the Stafford School Board. I've never done this before, so bear with me. My name is Leigh Anne Poland. I'm, my address, 10802 Samantha Place, Fredericksburg, Virginia. And I am the current president of the Rotary Club of Stafford. You may know something of us because of Operation Warm, school wars, the school supply drives. You may also know that we have two Rotary Interact Clubs that we support, one at Mountain View High School and one at Stafford High School. But you like, you may also know But you like, you may also know that over the last twenty years, our Stafford Rotary Club has delivered dictionaries to every third grader in Stafford County. And every year we do that. I ask the teachers and I ask the principals, is this still relevant in this digital age? And they all say it absolutely is, and that still amazes me. And the kids are thrilled to get their own hard copy dictionary, so it's a really big deal. So it's one of our fun projects. But today I wanted to share with you about our Third Annual Meals of Hope Project. This project provides shelf-stable, vitamin-rich meals to neighbors in need. They are distributed by existing hunger ministries in our area, such as Serve, Stafford Junction, Micah Ministries, and so many others. In the last two years, we've delivered 25,000 meals and 45,000 meals, and our stretch goal this year is 75,000 meals. Our meal packaging event is scheduled for Saturday, February 22nd, at Stafford High School, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll have volunteers from the high schools, from scouts, from other Rotary Clubs, from agencies that actually will be distributing the meals. They actually come and package them as well. I am here tonight to ask the Stafford County School Board for your assistance in spreading the word about this project, to help us secure the food delivery partners, to help us secure perhaps some corporate sponsorship, and citizen donations, to help us deliver these 75,000 meals in our community. The, all donations go directly to Meals of Hope. The Meals of Hope Organization, which is based out of Florida, it is a Rotary-based organization, but all of the funds stay, that we raise are directed here for Stafford County, and Fredericksburg, and King George, and the overall Fredericksburg, greater Fredericksburg area. But the donations do not come to our club, they go specifically to the Meals of Hope Organization. I have provided a handout for you that provides some details about the organizations that will be distributing the foods that have in the last two years, and some contact information for the project, if you have questions, if you have ways to help us. And that's my cue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We can ask Ms. Johnson to perhaps put that on our website to help give you some publicity.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sherry Neal.
Good evening, Ms. Chairperson, board members, Dr. Kizner. Tonight I'm going to talk to you guys briefly about our, last time I spoke briefly in regard to contracts, our contract time. So right now, the county is offering full-time contract, or full-time positions. Full-time for school bus drivers are six and a half hours, okay? We're offering full-time positions, but majority of the bus drivers are having to do excess of six, seven, eight runs just to barely make six and a half hours. Just to barely make six and a half hours. I will use myself as an example. For instance, I have high school, middle school, and two elementaries, morning and afternoon, as well as a 155 annex, okay? Each day, because full-time is six and a half hours, I am doing the seven runs, okay? Each day, I am up to 20 minutes short, okay? This is a good percentage of our drivers, okay? So the drivers, majority of us sitting back there, are short on time, whether it's 10 to 15, 20 to 30, some of them exceed their times. We do field trips for extra money. These are our extra, this is out of our contract time. When we come up short in our contract time, whenever we do a field trip, we are docked because we are short on our contract time, and they take out X amount of time off the top of our trips, okay? We have got to look at possibly, at one point, our full-time contracted hours, I think were seven or seven and a half, they were dropped down to six and a half. In order to make all these contractual obligations of six and a half hours, they're struggling to get their current drivers their six and a half hours. So, and the county is advertising for full-time. If you can't give your already contracted drivers enough time, how are you going to give other dri, or someone coming in to the county contract? We need to look and see about having it drop down to six hours.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Yes.
Good evening, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in the Rock Hill District. I want to talk to you about the buses, too. Different things. First thing, I want to address car riders and the numerous problems that they are causing across our county. I recently had a conference at my daughter's high school at Mountain View. Because it was 40 minutes before school got out, and due to the early traffic jam, I couldn't even get across the secondary road of Mountain View to get into the driveway of the school. While I was sitting there, letting green light after green light go by, I saw a bus come along. The bus couldn't get in either. The bus had to drive up the curb, onto the grass, to get around the cars that were backing up the roads. So I propose, bus to me, bus transit is mass transit, they're carpooling, and I think we ought to encourage that. We offer that for free. So my idea is, I think that we should reward them. Bus drivers and bus kids should get priority pickup. If parents still want to pick up their child from school and get, you know, reject the free transportation, they should come afterward. I think that the parents are hindering our bus pickup. And the second thing, I've been listening to our bus drivers talk the last couple of meetings, and then I listened to the new bus expectations. I was a little disappointed. It seemed a little namby-pamby to me. When kids are cutting up on the bus and nothing happens to them, the other kids think, well, there's no consequences. So then they start cutting up, then the problem gets really big. Our student code of conduct is very, very clear. Under number nine, it says bus disruptive behavior, defiance of bus driver, or failure to comply with rules. It says a minimum of a warning or a long-term suspension of 11 to 45 days. Also, it can be considered bullying, which is number eight, right above that, and, because the bus drivers are getting bullied. And the punishment for that is a minimum of a short-term suspension of 10 days. This all sounds nice, but some, you know, these are kids. Kids need to have consequences and rules, and I think we need to be a little tougher and follow what we already have, instead of making up something new and help out our drivers. And then since I have a minute, I'll mention, too, the new website, it's great. I got on it, it's very easy to navigate, it looks good, it's terrific. So to Sherry Johnson's department, thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comment period and come to the board for board comments. Ms. Hollerbach, would you like to start?
I don't really have anything for you, so I'll defer my time to someone else.
Oh, Mr. McOscar.
Well, I have four, I have four pages.
We'll start with you first, next time.
I have four pages of small print.
Three minutes. Although I'm the person not here to start the timer.
I will also defer to my last meeting, which is next meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dr. Chase?
Sure, I have a few comments. I was on the school board, or the school website today also, and I have to say, I was similarly impressed with how much easier it was to navigate my way around things. So, yeah. I attended the Technology Advisory Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to mention or share that one of the primary concerns is the lack of a staff person at central office to support and coordinate and evaluate the technology instructional resource teachers. And this is important. Principals often don't really know what T I T R should be doing, and yet they're responsible somehow to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I think it really is important, if we are going to invest money into laptops and T I R Ts, that we have somebody to actually oversee that and make sure that it's being used before we keep spending more money on that. I attended the Stafford Education Foundation meeting in Chairwoman Healy's place, and I just wanted to say they're working hard on our first Stafford Education Foundation Gala to be held next spring, and it looks like it will be a wonderful event. And then, like many other people here, I attended the Band Together to Fight Hunger at Mountain View, and it was just a wonderful event, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Young?
Sure. So we just had an election, and I would like to congratulate the incoming board members, Susan Randall and Dr. Elizabeth Warner, for their win in the past election, and welcome them to the board. In terms of CTE, Virginia Department of Education has made some changes to the graduation requirements, and I mentioned this last time, but this is accreditation to better align skills associated with the profile of a Virginia graduate. And so this is to increase and get them ready for life skills and base learning skills and experience, so that we, they could provide with their test scores and workplace skills, content knowledge, et cetera. So the CTE Advisory Committee will be creating a focus group to define what work-based learning will look like in Stafford County, and I wanted to ask Dr. Kizner if Stephanie Als, she did a presentation at that CTE, the last one, and I would like her to come back and show the board, you know, what it's like, and it was a really good demonstration, and I thought the parents were very excited, and I think that most of the parents should see that, too. They should know what that profile of a Virginia graduate looked like. So Stephanie Als, if she could do that presentation at some point, that would be great. So there is this Discover for the Future Regional Event. This is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and that was held in October 9th, I think October the 9th and 10th. So they had a workforce connect, and I know Congressman Bob Whitman, he visited Boots Program at their job site, and that was, I think, on the 26th. And of course, I also attended, what's so funny? McOscar.
He's passing you some mints.
Oh, okay. We also attended the Band Together for Hunger, Fight Hunger in Stafford County, and I think they raised, what, 35,000 meals? And so we thanked Dr. Stempel and Ms. Karen Bingham, and Anna Marie Bolino, and also Sherry Johnson and her staff. I mean, this was great for this food, and I hope that these kids, they come to school hungry, you know, and they go home hungry, and some of these kids that are hungry are on your buses. So they act up, yes, sometimes. So that snack that you talked about, they might need that snack, so we need to just be, make sure that, at least if the bus rides along, that they could at least snack until they get to school. Other than that, upcoming event, there's another one. This is great, I'm looking forward to this one. It's on Thursday, Community Engagement, I believe very firmly in this, is the inaugural K-12 and Beyond Parent Resource Fair, for families to help their children to be successful. This is in line with that CTE that I was talking about, but this one is going to be held at the Mary Washington Stafford Campus, and there are a lot of partners involved. I'm sure Dr. Kizner had something to do with some of these, right, Sherry? Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue, Rappahanna, G-Cube, he's been coming a lot to our functions. Germana is involved, there's Marine Corps, Virginia Korea, so there's many here. So I'm hoping that the parents that are listening to the board today do show up here. I think this is great. And one last one, take a deep breath, Operation Christmas Cards for our troops. Approximately 26 schools will participate in this. B101.5 will pick up the cards and bring them to USASOA Office in DC, where they will be mailed directly to the troops in Iraq, Afghanistan, and other parts of the world where America's service members are bravely defending our great nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Oh, my speaker was off. Should I do that over?
No. That's okay.
I think they called it.
Ms. Gator, you can submit your comments for the record.
You are so prepared tonight. I was actually going to talk about all of those things, but I don't have to now. So I'm going to defer most of my comments to the next meeting, as you all are probably aware. I'll be vacating my seat as of January 1st.
No, January 31st.
January 31st?
Sorry, December 31st.
I'm sorry, January, no. Well, I know you want to get me out of here quicker, Ms. Healy, but, no, you're right, you're right, December 31st. Okay, do I have, do I have the floor now? So I'll defer most of my comments, because I have a couple of meetings and a lot more to say, but I do just want to express how grateful that I am to have had the opportunity to serve. It's been an incredible experience, a humbling experience, and I'm just, I feel very fortunate to have been able to sit here and serve Stafford County and, you know, maybe leave a small mark. I want to take an opportunity to welcome Dr. Elizabeth Warner. She's here with us tonight. I have, I'm very, very excited that she'll be joining the board. She's going to bring so much to this group of people up here, and I feel good to know that if anyone's going to sit here, it's going to be her. So welcome to this crazy family. You guys won't have to endure any more of my obnoxious and not funny jokes up here pretty soon. But I'll, I'll save the rest for the next meeting. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Hazard?
I will defer some of my comments to, for my colleagues at the next meeting, because I always like to be really prepared for those, and off the cuff, I would probably blubber or things like that, so I'm going to try not to do that tonight, so. But in that vein, I do hope that all those who came out and voted, no matter how you voted, that you cared about schools, and I hope that that energy does not leave. I think that's something all seven of us agree with. We are seven voices, and I know I keep saying it, and we are loud voices, we are all unique, but we are much better advocates when we aren't seven voices, that we are, that we have backup for the parents, the bus drivers, the teachers, the students who are in this county. We have a lot of challenges coming. We have so many amazing people here, but we do have some challenges. It's really disheartening to look at HR reports and see that people are leaving mid-year to go to, potentially to pursue either other positions or even leaving the profession. That's disheartening to me, and I know this group, and really would like to make sure what can we do to help that, to change that. So I look forward, though, as we go forward, we will be getting, Dr. Kizner shared with us in our work session, our new enrollment figures. Something we have to look at as a county. For anybody who is a citizen of Stafford County, I would really invite you to look at the presentation presented last Wednesday on the five-year outlook for Stafford County. One of the supervisors commented was, wow, that's discouraging. So I need, we need everybody to be aware, be a part of this conversation. The schools are a vital part of this community, not just because, you know, we have students in there. It is a vital part of the community for who we produce for the future. And I just hope that we can continue to partner and go forward. I believe that we need to make some pretty strong arguments about what is needed in this, in this county. I think our need, sometimes, although, and please, this is no disrespect, I am glad we got to hear the bond analysis tonight in our work session. However, I am always cautioned by, if we partner with and we start to change what our needs are to fit within the money that's available, we may miss the need. And then it, we all know how buildings slide. I want us to be in partnership, but I also believe we have to advocate for what we need when we need it. And... And having analyzed some of that information, some things need to change in Stafford County so that we have the revenues to meet the amazing needs of our students, but also our transportation and many other needs that we have. But the seven of us are tasked with the school system, and Dr. Kistner has been very vocal in showing us how we compare, and I think that that is a figure we need to really make sure everybody in this county understands. So, I hope the enthusiasm that we have continues into next year because we will need it during the budget time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. I want to thank Dr. Elizabeth Warner and also Ms. Susan Randall, who is, were with us for the work session and sitting through our meeting, and don't assume that all our meetings are going to go this quickly. This is a wonderfully light agenda, so we look forward to working with you. Also, you know, on a personal note, I want to thank the voters in the Rock Hill District. See some here now who are allowing me to come back and represent Rock Hill once again. So, thank you. Dr. Kistner?
Okay, thank you. I just want to maybe just follow up a little bit on something Ms. Hazard said. People do leave us. They leave for different reasons. One thing I think we all understand, hopefully, that people will tend not to want to depart a position or a system where they see the system as supportive and positive, and I think we as leaders, you as seven board members that have to make difficult decisions, and me as superintendent that has to navigate the decisions that you make, can contribute to a person's value. We talked about the buses earlier. I think we own some of the responsibility when students are misbehaving, when we have students on hour, hour-and-a-half bus rides, waiting at a bus stop in a cold rain, coming late, drivers that they may not know because we change, three on a seat. Sometimes the children are actually really acting like children. You'd be on a bus for an hour, an hour-and-a-half? You'd be eight years old, 10 years old, 12 years old? You think you could just punish for misbehavior? That doesn't work. If you think it works, we're fooling ourselves. Spotsylvania, the article that I sent you to the newspaper, I'm not making anything up that people can't read themselves. If we want to just follow what we've been following, then honestly, we'll just get the same results. And that's also going to be when we talk about per pupil expenditure, class sizes, lack of investing in professional development, and so on. I could give you a long list. So, I would say instead of us, like, wondering and feeling bad, what are the things we own and take responsibility for? And I take responsibility for a lot of things, and I look for that partnership as we move forward, and this should not be mysterious when people are leaving our school system. We need to take a good look at ourselves and say, what are the factors that are contributing it? Moving forward, though, I want to be positive. Okay? We are in a, maybe a little bit more than halfway through our school safety audit. I met with the consultants. They're visiting 14 schools. They should have a report, I guess, maybe in December or after the school year. The transportation consultants are starting, I think, next week. I will tell you, I have my parent advisory committee tomorrow, an issue that has become, been raised more, especially as it's tied to a couple of things, the research, wondering, and this is also coming from some staff, wondering if our sequence of when school starts and the hours of our schools and high school going first versus elementary, I think we owe it to take a look at it. Three principals and myself visited Enrico County Public Schools two weeks ago, visited a high school for, look at their schedule. They just flipped from early to later, and talking to staff and students, their only response is, why did we wait so long? I'm not telling you what's right or wrong, but I know, I believe it needs to at least be looked at. We owe it, and as a superintendent that has to make snow decisions, I must tell you, one of my greatest fear is having kids on the road so early, so dark, often first-time driving, so I do have a selfish motivation. Anyway, that's on the parent advisory agenda tomorrow for conversation because it has been, and that's something I plan to talk to the transportation person to see if our routing and schedule is contributing to the bus frustration many of us are experiencing or realizing. The business advisory committee, was it next week? We are, have been visiting, I'm really glad you mentioned CTEs. This group is growing, great interest. We're going to Mountain View for the next one. We've gone to North Stafford and Stafford. We're learning. We've built some partnerships that are really helping us in our classrooms, so we see great benefit, and people are saying, what can we do to help? So, I'm pretty excited about this group, and I see a lot of positive things. And then, the last thing to be real positive, on Election Day, our staff participated basically in three areas of professional development, discussion on equity issues, discussion on social-emotional issues, and discussion on literacy. And the feedback that I've heard overall, you're never going to have 100%, but overall was pretty positive, so I do want to thank, there's a large team that puts that effort together. So, anyway, I just want to end by saying, as I always say, we have so many great things in our school system that my only frustration may be that more people are not aware of it, and I hope together collectively, we could do maybe a little better job of telling our story and showcasing our children and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kistner. We have a single item on our action agenda, and that's 10.01, Approval to Renew the Annual Maintenance and Support Contract with EduPoint Educational Systems and the Synergy Student Information System in the amount of $201,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Decatur, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to information items. Item 11.01, Award of a Construction Contract in the Amount of $9,823,142 to Sorenson Gross Company for the Ferry Farm Elementary School Addition/Renovation Project contingent upon appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. We have a request from staff that the school board move this agenda item from information to action due to constraints in the construction timeline. Mr. McCosker, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve, I move 11.1 to action.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. McCosker, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, it's now in action. Mr. McCosker, do we have a motion?
I move to approve 11.01 for approval.
Okay. Motion in a second?
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, I would like Mr. Anderson to come up. I don't know, some of us have met Mr. Anderson and some in the community have not, but I've been in close coordination with Mr. Anderson for a bit now on this project since taking it over, and so, please, could you just explain a little bit so the community understands where we're moving from and where we're going to with the project?
Sure. Yeah, it's, and I've been here now two and a half months, and this is one of the first projects that I was made aware of, and so, I've become very familiar with the Ferry Farm Elementary School Addition and Renovation Project. And again, I'm John Anderson, the Executive Director for Facilities and Maintenance with the school system. So, it's a phased project. We're going to be doing an addition onto the backside of the school to add classrooms and an art room and a music room, and then the 1955 wing in the front is going to be completely renovated, and that's the first phase. And one of the reasons we want to get started now is we have an opportunity to move the kids. A lot of the work can happen over the winter break as far as the startup, and there's some things we can get involved with earlier if this is approved tonight, and it's going to help us in the, in the long run to complete the project on time. It's about a year-long project, so the last phase is going to end at the end of next calendar year, and barring any unforeseen conditions, which there may be some with a renovation of this type, and so, it's a, I've walked the school several times. It's an older school. I think they do a great job with what they have. I know there's a lot of pride in that school, and this project's going to make a huge difference. I'm an architect, so I really enjoy seeing lighting being brought towards the interior and what they're going to do with the courtyard. The 1955 wing will be completely redone for classrooms, and then they are also working on the 1966 wing. We had a favorable bid, so all of the additive alternates are included in what we're recommending tonight, and that includes skylights and part of the darkest part of the center of the school, as well as lightening protection, and then redoing the windows, replacing the windows in the 1955 wing. So, looking forward to getting started on it and making a really nice project out of this.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate your work on this and the team moving forward. You know, just to recap very quickly, you know, for years, the Ferry Farm had been on for a rebuild, and, you know, both boards, this board and the Board of Supervisors, we pulled that off, and we racked and stacked, and it didn't make the cut. It was very apparent that we were not going to ever get a rebuild of Ferry Farm. Promises from 10 years to 15 years down the road until, one, a new high school was built of about $150 million; two, that now a new $50 million road bond that just got approved, we'll squeeze that in, too, and then, of course, a new elementary school and courthouse. So, it would just never happen. So, you know, a fool is one that just keeps dreaming that a rebuild of Ferry Farm, which the community wanted and the community deserved, would happen, but it's only a fool who thinks that even after all those costs I just put together, and the supervisors basically saying at the last meeting, and one supervisor, hey, they're opening up, they're opening up space, you know, a new trailer, so we've got to really start thinking about putting trailers on our schools because I don't even think that the high school is going to come down in the next few years. And I'm not approving anything that doesn't add significant a number of kids. So, this is the right way to go. This is $12.8 million for the kids at Ferry Farm right now. We also have a $1 million parking lot coming through, which is sorely needed, and this addresses the immediate concerns of not just a nicer school, but remember, it was about the safety, it was about security. We have steps that go up from zero to seven feet tall, and a matter, the incline is crazy. As a matter of fact, a person died on it during an election a couple of years down by falling down those stairs. I mean, and then we have no security vestibule, so this is something that we need to take care of now. It'll be up to the next school board member, who, Susan Randall, who's extremely smarter than I am, and then it'll be up to her to follow up on those renovations to make sure that we get them all done and the school gets completed at the 100% level. I think this will get to 60%, but there is plans in the out-years to get the rest. So, I really appreciate the board's support, and I really appreciate the Board of Supervisors' support on this project because it is, the next couple of years is going to be tight. Next, and I'll be sitting in my living room watching you, but it's going to be tight, and it's going to be a fight. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just had a, yeah, I just had a question in terms of hearing what I'm hearing and knowing about project management. You know, I'm PMP certified, so in terms of slippage, do we see that we could get everything done within the appropriate time that you've mentioned? And secondly, should we put aside some funds to ensure that everything that we're looking at could be built? And then, third, you mentioned back, and then you mentioned the front envelope. What else is remaining to make Ferry Farm, like, almost brand-new?
Okay, and I can answer the last question first, is, there's also the 1966 wing, which is in the back, and the basement is being redone, and that's an extensive renovation. There is a lighter renovation on the floor above, which will include, we're not reconfiguring the walls there. I know there have been some concerns with the newer part of the building that's not getting renovated, and so, that's something that'll need to be addressed in future years. There's an outdated mechanical system, for example, in the newer part of the building that will eventually need to be replaced. It's functioning. It's very difficult to renovate everything in a building that's occupied anyway, so the phasing plan is fairly complicated, and in my opinion, I think coming back and doing improvements in the future, which is a given in the building industry, I mean, as buildings age, they need to be refurbished, so it's just something we would have to work into the plan as far as the newer section.
And so, all those items that you mentioned, back and all of those, are they priorities on the 3R list?
The, we will be looking at adding that. I don't think that everything that's needed is on the 3R list. There's a re-roof, and there's a parking lot upgrade, and those are coming up very soon. And then, the newer part is something that's not as in bad a shape as some of the other priorities that are on the 3R list. We're focusing the renovations on the areas that need it most, and there's a lot that will be done for the 1955 and 1966 wing, and it's touching the 1988 section. The 1990 section is not as in bad a shape. And your other question was about whether or not we can get this done on time, and it's a collaborative effort, so I can't promise you that it's going to be done on time. I can just say that we're going to do the best we can, working with the contractor, and help them to be successful. And a lot of it depends on the start date, so this is a really important meeting today because as soon as this moves forward, then the contractor will start to lock in the subcontractor pricing, and they'll become much more detailed with their schedule. We're also looking at the schedule and the staging plan, but until this is approved, we really don't, we're not allowed to work directly with the contractor to start to collaborate on the project and get the project done.
Yeah, okay.
And I think you had a third question.
The one thing that we missed was the energy contract, which takes care of a lot of our schools. They're hoping to front-load Ferry Farm because of the lighting.
Yes, and we do have money in the Energy Performance Contract to come in and improve the lighting in the newer section, so that's actually happening. That's funded now, and it's something that will improve the look and the feel of the newer section that's not being touched with the renovations.
Yeah, and if you, you could prioritize the items that are on the 3R list to make sure that they come together while you're doing that, because you're already in there.
Yeah.
And so, you might as well put those items in there, and that will reduce costs, otherwise you have to come back around.
Right.
And it's going to cost you a little bit more.
That's already being planned, and it's primarily lighting.
Not trying to tell you all how to do your job.
Lighting and controls that'll be upgraded in that newer section of Ferry Farm.
Yep, two hallways and a kitchen still.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, yeah.
Does the kitchen get an air conditioning?
Yes, so, and that's actually another project.
Yeah, the kitchen, good question, because I didn't know where that went.
That's my only question.
The kitchen, we're still getting, we're getting air conditioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the old kitchen, so we're, you know, we still have a kitchen and a couple of hallways, and the gym, the gym got a refurb a couple of years ago, but the kitchen cafeteria and a couple of hallways is left, and we'll, you know, we got the mark on the wall for that, so I'm very pleased, and I know the community will be very pleased.
You want to mention the two community meetings?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, we are also planning presentations to the community and also separate presentation to the teachers. We've had a lot of communication with the principal and with the staff there, but once we know the contractor's detailed schedule and we've got their, all the details worked out with their staging plan, then we plan to present that to the teachers and to the community, and we're targeting early December for that presentation. So, early December presentation, then there's going to be a lot of movement in the school that's coordinated, and we're intent to minimize the disruptions to the school while all this is going on, because there's quite a few projects that are happening at Ferry Farm.
We also want to involve that PTO because they've been very, very involved in this whole process.
Yes, we're coordinating with Principal Freeman, and he's going to make sure everybody has the date and the information needed to be able to attend the community presentation.
Thank you. Mr. McCosker?
I have.
I didn't know one else had anything to say. Ms. Hazard wants to say anything, then we can get your vote.
No, before everybody rolls theirs, I would like to know, though, because this has been discussed in other projects, about the contingency. been discussed in other projects, about the contingency, especially in an old building. What is the contingency, because we have talked about this with your predecessor, and unfortunately, I have gone back and forth on that. Is there a, the contingency for when you build, there is usually a percentage. Is there a recognition in this contract that this is an older building? I mean, I, too, am familiar with an older building. If you're building, older buildings have more stuff that you have in walls and floors and other stuff. Is, what, what is the contingency percentage on this contract?
Yeah, it's 460,000 in contingency is available for the, any unforeseen conditions that we uncover, and it's a normal amount.
Wow, okay.
That doesn't sound like much compared to other contracts.
That sounds very low to me, but I've argued this before, so I will leave that one. The other question I had about, when you talk about future projects, are any of those that are envisioned, is there an ability to increase capacity? Because the current, this current, it does increase classroom space, but it does not, from what I remember, very minimally, if at all, increase capacity in the building. Is there any thought that future, because when I was listening to the Board of Supervisors, part of what I was hearing was, we're all in a growth model.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're correct.
For funds to be available, I...
You know, I think, no, that's great, Madam Chair, if I may. No, I know where you're at, and I think that's, I'm going to leave that up to the next school board member, but you're right, and the capacity would be probably in the fourth and the fifth grade hallway in the back, if we were to do that on the next phase. That could be, that could be someplace where we could make up room, or add some room. As you know, we did have, on the original plans, that came over about 1.9 million. We did have a few extra classrooms in the kindergarten and the first, and the special education classrooms, but that got killed because it went over budget.
Okay.
Yeah, and there is additional rooms being added, so that is increasing the capacity. If there, it's not in the current plan to do other additions at this time, but there's space out there to be able to do that. If there was, if there was a need in that particular area to add capacity to the school, then it's feasible that that could possibly be done. It's just not a plan at this, at this time.
My last one is, I see the additive items. Having sat up here for the Stafford High School one, I really don't want to relive additive items ever again, but I'm sort of curious why these were chosen, because it seems like there's some other things that were in, like, the 3R, that to me were more maybe health and safety oriented, or perceived to be health and safety oriented, that I wonder if those maybe should have been chosen, because there has been, sort of in my opinion, some community members, and I'm not saying, I'm just curious why these three were chosen.
Yeah, the additive alternates are basically items that could be eliminated from the project if we were over budget. In this case, we're not over budget, so they can be added, and so one of the things that is often considered for additive items are how easily could you remove it from the project and still have a complete project? So the windows for the 1955's wing, for example, they could, they could last. It makes more sense to get those replaced now. When we got the interior of that wing, we'll also be removing the windows and putting in new windows, and it makes way more sense to do that now during the major renovation than it would be to come back after the renovation is completed and take those windows out and replace them. And they're going to be more energy efficient, they're going to be more comfortable for the students, and even bring in better light. Lightning protection is another item that's not required by the code. It's something that is normal to have on a, on a school, so it's just also something that could have been delayed and installed later. It makes sense to do it now. And then the skylights, the same, really the same category. That's a relatively small item. The amount for the skylights was only about $9,000, but it's, now is the time to go up there on the roof and cut the holes and bring in the light to that interior core that I mentioned. So, I mean, there could have been other items added to the project that would have been possible to include as an alternate. I wasn't here during that time, so I don't know, you know, what might have been discussed. I know that the intent is always to have a complete project when you're ready to construct it, and try to finish the areas that you're focusing on, and then, you know, plan for the future for areas that might be needing attention at another date.
A board of supervisor made this comment at the meeting about certain things that weren't covered, and so I feel I needed to ask, because she had concerns that those weren't going to be covered, and we don't have a plan to cover those items, so that's why I...
Okay, and if you would provide me that detail, I'd be glad to take that and look at it, as far as what, you know, we're planning for the future work. I know that one of the concerns has been about the mechanical system for the newer wing. That item would have been too expensive to include in this phase. It would have also complicated the phasing for the project and increased the cost significantly, so it just wouldn't have fit in this project where these other items did.
It was just something that was raised. Is this our one bite at the apple? If so...
Then when we finish the discussion, we're going to vote, so if there's anything you want to raise.
Then I'll just make my final comment on voting. I know that there has been a lot of concern about how I feel about this project. I feel very strongly about this project, that it should have been a rebuild. And Mr. McOsker, when we passed this as a board and the board of supervisors, it was a rebuild. To me, this is sort of a, I hate to say, a casualty of the bond, and we wanted to make sure it fit within the bond and all that, and I believe in some sense, I believe we did short-change Ferry Farm, because we didn't continue to push. But I understand, Mr. McOsker, I do, but I do believe us negotiating before, on the need, before we took it, before we take it over there, I believe Ferry Farm is a casualty of that. I have to be honest, I think that that's the case. I do think there are some other areas in the building that needed to be done first, which I have been very upfront about. However, I will be supporting the project tonight, somewhat reluctantly, because I do believe we are missing some items that people had concerns about whether they were correct or not, that I think we had an opportunity maybe to do. But I do believe that we need to move forward with this project. I am concerned about it staying on topic and on budget, but that is going to be your issue to move forward with, and I certainly hope we don't find any major problems when we go through it, because we have used a lot of our contingency for this year to fund very important projects for our staff, so, but I will be supporting the project this evening.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve? Please say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. McOsker.
Hooray. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next information item, 1102, approval of the purchase of security cameras slash video equipment from Integrated Security Technology, Inc., and for installation services from Express Technologies, Inc., for high schools and middle schools at a cost not to exceed $300,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. This will be coming back to us for action at the next meeting. Are there any questions anyone wants to raise?
I have a quick question. I do. I can take video off of my cellphone, off of my video, old video camera, I can take it from almost anywhere, and upload it to a USB, or upload it to Google Drive, or put it somewhere that I can store it for a long time. So reading through this, the explanation here, it talks about how we can't keep any of our stuff. Why is that, and who can answer that for me? Why can't we take what's on our video from each of our high schools and download it, upload it to Google Drive, or put it on a USB? Why can't we do that?
So I could address some of those questions. We certainly could store the video content in the cloud. We would not want to store it on YouTube, that's a public, that's a public service, so we wouldn't, because it's security video, and we wouldn't want to use that.
Right, I didn't, I didn't mention YouTube, I said Google Drive.
Google Drive has limits, and we would have to pay to go beyond those limits, and the amount of storage we're talking about is in the tens of terabytes, and it would be prohibitively expensive. It would also put a great deal of pressure on our internet connection. We have the advantage of having an internal fiber network that was purchased a number of years ago, so it makes much more, it's much more cost-effective for us to store that and manage that data internally to our own network, as opposed to sending it out to the internet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, if anything comes up between now and the next meeting, please send questions to Dr. Kizner.
Dr. Kizner.
And you can send them, share the answers with the board. All right, that brings us to 11.03, approval of the 2020, 2021 High School Program of Studies course catalog. This is on for information, and will be coming back at the next meeting for action. Any questions? Mr. Chase?
I just have a couple. I just have a comment, and I just wanted to say that I'm really delighted to see that students wishing to participate in the IB program, I gather this is already going on, but that it's now in the, in the course catalog, that they will not have to provide their own transportation. I think providing access to our signature programs for students, all students, is a really big deal, that you shouldn't be limited in your opportunity by your parents' ability to provide transportation, so I think that's great. And I've already asked this of staff, that CGS culminating page 16, that we add that research requirement, so that people are clear that that is part of the program, but otherwise, it looked good to me.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Hazard?
Just three, we don't, you don't have to answer these tonight. I do see the last course that's on there, the Emergency Medical Telecommunications. It is a partnership with the Sheriff's Office. I'm just curious what the cost to the school district is, just, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but just so we know for next year for planning. I see the travel programs for the teachers, I just, myself, want to just learn a little bit more. I'm glad that we're doing it, making that a travel program. And then with regard to dual enrollment, whenever we put dual enrollment, and I will say, I mostly focused on this sheet than the whole book, is making sure very clearly that we have a qualified teacher to teach it, because I know dual enrollment, we have a lot of issues, so I just want, make us, want to make sure we don't over-promise, and then, you know, just making sure we're real clear.
Yeah, so that's really a huge barrier, so it just needs to be recognized that we have very few dual enrollment options because of our credential.
But if we just make sure it's real clear.
I'm just very, and I'm just very pleased with the table of changes, thanks to the staff and Dr. Strick and crew. Appreciate that, makes it real easy for us to kind of focus in on that. But yeah, I, too, excited about the IB. I'd like to push them to Mountain View, since we have so many empty seats in the out-years there, if you do want to go to IB, we'll drive you to Mountain View, not Brook Point, because Brook Point, we're under, right?
It's 200.
200, 200.
247, I thought you said.
Yeah, 247 kids over, or...
In three years.
In three years, so by the time this rolls out and the word gets out, we'll send them to Dr. Stempel, and I...
And we welcome them in the Rock Hill District.
Oh, that's exactly what I was going to say next.
We did get 131 that weren't expected this year, though.
The one that's a little fishy here, and I got to make a guitar ensemble, was that you, Kizner, did you push this? Guitar ensemble, you added a course?
I was going to teach it.
You're going to teach it? Okay, well, that's good. I just don't want to pay any extra, not, just kidding, just teasing. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, this is great, that transportation is free. Something came up, the gifted, the advisory, gifted advisory committee, that communication was an issue, so I just want to make sure, having free transportation is one thing, but making sure that these students, the students may know, but that the parents also know about these programs, so that they could talk to their students about it. For some reason, in the gifted program, for example, one of the discussions was communication that some of the poor or black and brown students were not aware of it, so I just want to make sure that we're communicating to all students.
I know, I'm commenting. That is really, another really good point. We, well, we discovered, I discovered that a couple of weeks ago, that some people that were interested were not aware that transportation is available, so thank you to remind us that.
I wasn't aware transportation was available. Seriously. I don't know how it was advertised, but I was not aware of that.
I'd like to get the victory, but I'm going to give it to you, because you might have recalled in that room that we were looking at how we could create greater access, and the board made it very clear, which I applaud you, in our equity effort to make sure transportation is available. So you guys get the victory, and I'll take the credit.
It's okay.
Sounds like a win-win. All right, any other comments? This will be coming back the next meeting. The next information item is approval of the school board's FY '20, '21 budget priorities. Didn't we move that down?
We amended it, yeah.
We moved it.
We moved information instead of action.
That's what I just said, the next, the next information item.
Yep.
Okay.
We're fighting.
No, I mean...
We're good.
I mean, say it, don't spray it. I mean, you guys got to adopt a new thing about the budget element.
Well, the title is still approval of the budget priorities. It is actually information item 11.04.
Right.
Or did you change, did you change the title, Ms. Hall?
I noted down it's information, so that it's clear.
Right, that's, right.
We're all clear. I didn't refresh my screen, so I didn't have any more information items showing, so we can be clear.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. All right, any discussion? Ms. Young, do you want to start us off?
I asked for input and received from some, and not from all, and so we're here.
Okay, Dr. Chase?
Yep, just a quick comment, which was, I was reading through all those minutes, Ms. Hall, that you so graciously provide us with, and one suggestion that Dr. Kizner had made last time, that since we're bringing this back next time, that might be worth adding, was the, what an increase in per pupil expenditure might provide, so to try to spell out a little bit more about how, how that would translate to improving our students' experience in Stafford County Public Schools.
And we'll have that for you.
All right, other discussion?
I like it.
No, all right, well, this will be coming back to us for action at the next meeting. All right, that brings us to the upcoming meetings. The next board meeting, the only board meeting in December, is December 10th, and then we have a joint work session with the board of supervisors with respect to the capital improvement plan on December 17th. Do we have a motion for the closed session, Dr. Chase?
Yes. I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss or consider the scheduling and format of an employee's requested dismissal hearing.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all ayes. All right, we will convene in the closed session room and return.
The Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Wow.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Agreed.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Hall, we're back.
Agreed.
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 No action.
Yep, no action.